Joan, are you speaking at the public hearing or?
Oh.
Yes?
All right, I'd like this call to be public hearing to order. Roll call please.
Mr. King?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild? Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Smarle?
Here.
The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following. File the Council Number 31, 2024, approving and accepting the city's grant and capital budget, which included a capital budget reserve fund spending plan for the year 2025 pursuant to Section 904 of the city's Home Rule Charter, and file the Council Number 11 of 2024.
Is anyone here wish to speak on this?
Joan Hodelwan at Scranton. I don't know if you have the document in front of you, but on page four is listed the Public Safety Training Center, which, you know, in principle, I think is a very good thing. But I wish that during your discussion of this event, as you pass it forward and vote on it, explain, you know, how this Public Safety Training Center correlates with the Sorenti Center, and in addition to that, the special operations van, which be used to transport candidates to the fire academy, but we're creating our own fire academy, it seems. So just someone to clarify those issues would be nice. Also, on page seven, that's where the Sorenti building is listed, but below that, under Building and Maintenance, City Hall Operations/Facility Usage Study, $125,000. And then below that is the City Hall Operations Expansion. Well, I would think that the study and its conclusions would precede a commitment to expansion. However, having said that, here we are investing millions of dollars into the renovation of City Hall, which ought to be the heart of city operations, number one. Number two, we're now in the digital age, the information age, and technology should allow us to facilitate operations with less manpower, because now you can do things digitally that you could not have done in the past, that required many hands. You see that across many industries and all sorts of government functions. Example, accounting and bookkeeping are dying professions, because you can buy QuickBooks or some similar software. So as you get to the point in your later meeting where you discuss this capital budget, those are some issues that I think need addressing, that we are not expending funds or committing funds that may have a higher priority elsewhere, especially buying another building for City Hall operations. Show me the need for it, and then I'll pay you the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Yeah. Under, this would be page four, Engine Number 10. I know we talked about this during caucus last week. I'm concerned that there's no funding, no specific funding dedicated toward renovating Engine Number 10. I know that there was discussion about possibly moving Engine 10 off of East Mountain. I'm dead set against that. I won't vote for moving it off the city, off the East Mountain. We've been down that road before. It was a terrible fire. It took them a long time to get there, and the home, thank God, no one was seriously injured, but the home burnt to the ground. So I have concerns that there was no funding, specific funding dedicated to Engine 10.
To speak to that, there was a study, last year's capital budget did have funding in there to do a study on Engine 10. If you remember, we voted that down, because I think a lot of us up here feel the same way as you do about taking Engine 10 off of East Mountain. So I think this is a, the reason it's still in here is to keep that conversation alive amongst the administration, however, there's no funding associated with it.
Right, and it does mention continuing to evaluate the needs and feasibility of a construction project for Engine 10, building replacement. A whole year has gone by, and there's been no discussion whatsoever about, I mean, they have needs up at Engine 10. It's pretty clear. The building needs to be updated. It's not large enough to accommodate what their needs are. They have, they certainly have the land there to expand on their existing footprint. So I'm hoping that the administration seriously looks at, maybe just forget about doing the feasibility study and just start focusing on, on, you know.
Design.
Yeah, design and just, and replacement, expand, design, expansion, replacement on existing footprint.
And do we want to hold this up until they address that in the capital budget? Because I wouldn't mind doing that until we get a definitive answer on Engine 10.
Well, tonight, there's a public hearing, so we wouldn't vote on it until next week, so.
That's something to keep in mind.
Yeah, it's something to keep in mind, and something to see if we can get some answers on that, Frank, if you could.
I will.
Thank you very much.
So I actually brought that up in caucus either the last week or the week before, that there's no money designated for Engine 10. A feasibility study is to tell us if it's feasible or not. We don't need to be sold if it's feasible or not. We decided last year collectively that we don't want it, we want to keep it. So I think we stayed at our ground. So I asked around myself, not anybody directly with administration, okay, why isn't there any money targeted in the budget for that? And I was told that there might be waiting for some type of grant. I don't know that to be true, but I agree, we need some clarification as to what their plans are and why there's no money dedicated in the budget for it.
And as Joan, so moving away from that, hopefully we can get some clarification before we vote on this next week with respect to the new, the City Hall Operations Facility Usage Study, oh, the expansion. So they did, oh, they estimated $1.8 million. I don't know where they came up with that figure, and if in fact, is the building next door? Is it fidelity? I don't know. That's something else I would be interested in knowing a little bit more about.
So item 5H as of last week was, $100,000 used to be used towards the Operations and Facility Usage Assessment Project, and last week I had asked if under 5H, if the City Hall expansion was going to be included in that, and the answer, I got back three words, yes, it is. So they're looking to do a study on Operations and Facility Usage that's going to include City Hall to expand on what Joan was saying. You know, in the age that we're in right now, the next big bust in the banking industry is going to be the commercial office space bust that's going to happen. Right now, I think it's 25% of large cities are, have empty office space. New York City, it's going to be a huge problem, and while other cities are, you know, getting smaller in their office usage, here we are in Scranton looking to expand that. I'm against the project unless someone could tell me otherwise, but it's been over a year now that I've expressed that I'm not interested in expanding, no matter what building it is in. Right now, this building seems underutilized from what I could see.
I agree. So this, this expansion project, or, you know, the rumored purchase of the building next door has been around for three years. Past three capital budgets, I've seen it in there. I was against it. I'm still against it. I don't see the need for it. I'm thrilled we're investing in the restoration of this building, beautiful building. I don't think it's, I think it's underutilized. So I agree that I don't even want to waste any money on looking next door or any other, or expanding in any other facility to do the day-to-day work that we already do here.
There are challenges with this building regardless of all of the renovations. I understand that. And specifically, the main challenge is being for ADA accessibility. That is one of the major issues I see with City Hall. And believe me, I'm 110% with the renovation and restoration of this building. So, you know, perhaps that's something that needs to be addressed in this building specifically, but moving forward, but I'd want to know a lot more, like, City Hall expansion. I mean, if we're expanding, it's got to be downtown. It's got to be in close proximity to City Hall, so maybe we can get a little more clarity on that.
I mean, it's one thing to come to us and say, you know, when looking at a cost benefit, you know, underground parking in the building next door is going to save us such and such amount of money.
Right.
And we want the underground parking. That's why we're looking to get into that building. I don't know if that's the case. I don't know how many parking spaces are utilized for, for city workers, but they're estimating $500,000 to operate the building per year. So we're going to add half a million dollars to our expenditures per year. How is that going to help us either provide more services, which I don't think are occurring, provide more access, which isn't occurring? I really don't see how it, how it makes any sense.
Okay, anyone else? Well, I do believe it is the building next door that they are going to be looking at. I don't believe the bank that owns it right now is in any position to be moving in the next few years anyway. They are almost a standstill there. They found, ran into a lot of problems, and I guess over-doubled their budget, so we have some time to figure this all out. If there's no further business, I'm going to take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Hello, gentlemen. Steve Osolinski, Superintendent Construction, Pennsylvania Water, Daniel Rickard, Senior Manager Operations, Matt Griffith, Senior Project Engineer, and James Mack, Senior Supervisor, Operations of Wastewater. We're good? All right, so you're here to give us an update on what we're doing right now, what you're doing in the city right now, and what your future plans are? Okay, we'll begin with you.
As far as the water goes, as far as the 24 projects, we're completely finished. We finished the actual overlay on Monroe Avenue yesterday, so we are 100% done with the water end of the projects. As far as the 22, or the 25 projects, it's going to our budget process right now. I really don't have an update on where it's going to be for probably another month. So what I'd like to do is maybe come back late November, early December, when I have it finalized, and I can give you my whole schedule for 25.
All right.
I'll go over what's, what's almost complete and what's pending. So we're in pretty good shape. Right now, we have Main, North Main Avenue from Love.
Excuse me, can you just pull the mic a little closer? I know some of the back are having trouble.
Is that better?
Can you pull it closer to yours? Thank you.
Is that better? All right, okay. We have a North Main Avenue from Love Place to Oak Street that is currently under contract for sewer line replacement under, with RLE. Their start date is 9/23 with a completion of 10/18, and final restoration date of, in and around the last week of December. That's the only one that's not underway right now. We have South Main Avenue from Reagan Place to Einan Street. That is underway. That started on 9/3, supposed to be done early next week, and pave is scheduled for the last week of October. And we have two storm projects, one, Pittston Avenue from Kane to Sanders. We're working with the water company. We're doing a storm part now, they're going to follow up, from what I understand, is tentative with the, with the water next, next year. So that's under, under contract with Pioneer. The start date on that, I know it's got pushed back a little bit due to material-wise, I think they're starting the end of this week, early next week for Sanderson, and the same thing. So that'd be Pittston from Kane to Sanderson, Sanderson from Pittston to Bernie, and these are all storm line crossover replacements. And like I said, like I said, they're starting probably next week, finish 10/15 with restoration shortly after that. We plan on having everything restored by the end of the year. One open paving is Dixon Avenue from Greenridge to Electric Street. That is all complete. We got tentative that they're going to pave it in two weeks, so that'll be, that'll be done.
What's that, North Washington Avenue from Greenridge to?
No, Dixon Avenue.
Oh, Dixon.
Dixon.
Oh, down below.
Down below, yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah, from Greenridge to Electric.
That's the street that the individual was talking about last week about being a little dark, right?
Yeah, sort of street light.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's on, on schedule to get done. West Parker Street, construction is complete, looking for final restoration sometime next month, that, that project is done. As well, Court, again, that construction is done. Timeframe for final restoration is next month. And Garwood Drive from Penwood to Park Drive, again, that construction is complete, temporary restoration is there, and that is scheduled to be done same time. So hopefully, our contractor's grouping all of our projects together and hitting them all next month, so that's where we stand at.
So all of these final restoration projects that you have right now that you just read, that was for the water company?
The wastewater side of American Water.
Wastewater, okay. So is there any other plan for water mains or gas mains in those areas? Did we check to make, at least try to find out if there's any plans in the near future, so we don't dig it up in two years from now, or?
As far as water, no, there's no plans. We, we get together before we do any construction in-house.
Okay.
So everything we have together is Pittston Avenue, which we are going to piggyback them as soon as they're done. I'm going to go in there in the spring, and I'm going to do my water work, and then we're going to overlay it, but they're going to do base restoration and make it smooth for the winter. But I just want to add that Dixon Avenue, that was a question that was on the list that was sent to me. The question was if that was going to be overlaid totally, yes. What you see, what was marked out there is just for the base restoration, and then we're going to mill an overlay curb to curb. That was the question that was asked. So that will be overlaid curb to curb.
Okay, and Mr. Mack, the list that you read off, will you provide us a copy of that? And perhaps, Frank, we may go to the gas company and find out if they have any near in the future plans to replace any mains on those streets that they're already working on.
Understood, sir.
In the past, we were assured that you guys communicate with the gas and water company. Does that still occur with regards to projects and, you know, when you're going to do your part or their part? Is that still coordinated?
Yes, it does. Yes, we meet several times a year, and we also exchange our project lists as they, as they are approved through, throughout either company, or they change throughout either company. So we're in constant communication. So Chris Clancy is my counterpart of the water company. Bobby Judge would be Steve and Jim's counterpart on the construction side, and we are in pretty much constant communication with projects. So now understanding things can change, emergencies come out, main breaks, things like that that we can't control, but all planned work is communicated and coordinated.
So when them updates do occur, like you said, they possibly can, do you share that, the latest updates with, with that collaboration with the city?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Right, so that's why Steve wants to hold off. We have a list, a tentative list for next year. We'd rather hold off another month or two until it's 100% finalized, so we don't give you misinformation. So we'll share, we'll share that list once we have it, and if there are any changes going forward. I know, we, we do hold monthly calls with the city, the third, the third Thursday of every month, where we, where we review the list we just reviewed with you, we review that list on the call with your permitting department, with Don King, and the planning department, and the mayor's invited as well. But, so we go through the list, and we do provide updates on a monthly basis as well.
Okay, and your paving, or your, your replacement list of all your, you know, the piping and stuff, that greatly affects the city's paving list also. So as soon as, as you get it, so that next year we can plan our paving list also.
Yeah, usually it's the other way. Usually the city will send me a copy of the paving list.
Okay.
And I'll go through my work, and even if there's, I'll go through their paving list, and if there's an old main or something that I can go in and do the, do the work, and we'll do the pipe work, then we pave that street, and the city could take the money somewhere else. We try to coordinate, we've been coordinating that for the last few years.
Okay, great, great.
So I just have one. So I live every day traveling on North and South Main Avenue, and it's like the old west. I mean, come on, I'm sure you guys realize that. And, and the reason why you're here is because we get a lot of complaints from not only residents, but your customers. So, and I just wanted to clarify, at the end of the day, you know, three words, curb to curb. Paving's going to be curb to curb, correct? For every project you just spoke of tonight.
Yeah, so North Main Ave specifically, that's a great example of where we're coordinating with PennDOT for the bridge replacements on both North Main Ave over Leggett's Creek. We're coordinating with PennDOT around the corner on the East Parker Street Bridge that's currently closed. UGI is currently renewing the gas services from Parker Street to Viewmont Drive, which is the same area that we just did the water main. They already have a new gas main in that area from what I understand, so they're just replacing all their services now. The city actually has some storm work planned for, that's currently in design with Riley and Verandis, which is Borton Lawson previously. So we're waiting for milling overlay on that street until we can coordinate with all parties, because there's still pending work, honestly, in those areas from other utilities. So even though we're ready, our base restoration will be done in the next two weeks by October 4th. That'll be base degrade. We can't mill an overlay at this point without the other utilities being complete, or basically telling them that they can't finish their portion.
So that one there, that's the main avenue from Love to Oak Street, right?
No, this one's Parker Street to Viewmont Drive, the 81 overpass, basically, by Shifts. You know, a lot of the major businesses in the area, you know, we, we have our inspectors in sight. I've met with several of the property owners that own a large portion of the strips there, trying to coordinate through the holiday schedule. I know when we started in October of last year, you know, I sat down with Mark Reese from Shifts, and we stayed away from the, the businesses during those times as best we could without, you know, putting a burden on contracts, pricing. So around their holiday schedule, we tried to work with them.
And that one won't be completely restored until the, now, do you know when the timeline is for that bridge, the bridge replacement on North Main Avenue?
So the last I heard from PennDOT was, it was going to be utility relocation in 25, and I believe because of the Parker Street Bridge, they moved the bridge project to 26. Now, PennDOT and the city have been, you know, working through that plan, but until East Parker Street opens, from what I understand, they can't close North Main Ave Bridge.
Okay, so and what's the current work there on North Main between, it's new water mains, right, from Viewmont Drive to Parker?
Yeah, so we had to run a new water main, because when they removed the bridge, there, we have to cut and cap our lines on both sides of the bridge for them to take the old bridge out. It's an old stone arch that our water lines actually embedded in the stone arch from years ago, and to remove that, we have to still continue to serve, so we went up and around on Wells and Driveway Drive, so that they could cut that off and remove the section of the bridge. And then we'll come back after the bridge is rebuilt in 26 and put the piece of pipe on their bridge between, well, on your bridge, between our two dead ends that are right there. So that'll be part of their restoration. But, you know, milling overlay, if UGI wasn't in there, our contractor said they could get it done this year, but I know that the city also has some storm repair work right around Shifts, right around the Convenient Mart there, and basically at the bridge. So if we mill and overlay the whole road, they're just going to be tearing it right back up to do the storm work. I believe in 25, the city has that planned as part of a grant.
So right now, there is, you guys did water work there?
We did water work there from October of last year until basically right now, we're finishing base repair work. All the services are done, all the water line is done. It was about 5,000 feet of 20-inch water main. All the services were renewed, and they're going in and doing restoration for the last three weeks, and they have about two more weeks left.
All right, what's that, so the final restoration can't be done until that other work is done and the bridge is completed, but what's, so what will that look like for the people in that area when it comes to like the temporary, it's going to be temporary restoration, right?
Right, so we're only able to come back up to the grade. If we mill and overlay the road, it's just going to get tore back up from the city. So on, like I said, those coordination calls that we have monthly, we kind of talk through it, and we've been asked to hold back on doing the milling overlay from the city until the storm work is done. So the storm work, last I heard from Riley Engineering, was proposed for middle of 2025, and then we were going to mill and overlay the road. You know, there's other options where, you know, you want us to mill and overlay sections, we can work with our contractor to do that. But like I said, the last conversation with Riley was there is a large portion that they needed to basically dig up and repair storm, city storm.
But Matt, so, but it won't be the temporary pavement? So they'll do the base restoration, which means they bring the, the little bit coarser, the 25-millimeter pave all the way to the top of the trench, and then, it's going to be level, it'll be permanent pave, but then in the spring of next year, you're likely to come back and you'll mill the whole curb to curb, the whole road down, inches and a half, and then pave the whole road. So it'll be better than just a temporary, they put in at the end of the day or the end of the week and kind of rough in. This'll be permanently laid.
Right, and we did, at one point during the project, we actually had the contractor stop putting mainline pipe in, and go back, and they dug out a lot of the temporary patch to try to make it a single level again, because they keep basically temporarily patching as they go, you know, as each piece of pipe goes in. So we did do that once during the project. Like I said, it took about a week just to do that, so there's a, you know, benefit. You're stopping putting in pipe and basically progressing the job to do that part as an extra cost to us, and ultimately, you know, repairs. So we continue just putting in the main line to get to the point where we can do that full base repair, where we have that, you know, eight inches of solid base repair with the one foot cut back on, you know, each side of the trench line.
Gotcha. Now, what does it look like up on Wells? You said you did the, like a build around or a workaround up towards Wells? What does it look like in that area?
So basically on Wells, we went about 25 feet off to the side, so they'll do curb to curb past that where we excavate it, and then Driveway Drive will be also paved, which is like the alley that runs basically from Wells to, it mirrors Marvine, kind of just the shorter along the creek there. That was repaired also, and then that'll get paved curb to curb.
Okay, did you guys put rock in there, like larger, like river rock along that, or was that a different, like a city project?
That was a city project, I believe, after the creek had the bank restoration project.
Okay. So Matt-
I'm sorry, go ahead. So instances where you don't go curb to curb, which I know sometimes you don't, and that's fine, do you seal them cuts with tar? Every one of them?
It should be every one of them, yes. I can't say every one of them is sealed, but yes, it is.
Steve, can you turn your mic on?
I'm hearing that that doesn't always happen. Just, I wanna make you aware of that. You can relay that to the-
I'll relay that to the contract.
Thank you.
So right now, like, the bigger projects, Myrtle Street was just done, correct? Myrtle Street, North Main Avenue, and then, I don't know if you wanna, can you run over what happened on Myrtle, like, what the project looked like, just a general overview on Myrtle?
Myrtle was over 4,000 feet of water main we did from, from, I think it was Washington all the way up to across Harrison and into the state highway portion. We renewed the water main all the way up, and we renewed every service and tied in at every intersection. That project took a little longer than scheduled because we went right through the winter with it, and we had some issues over the winter. But once they got finished with it, we restored it within three weeks after it was, after the project was finished, we put the base in, and we went and we overlaid continuously. There was some issues up there. I know there was a couple of questions. There was a couple of sinkholes that opened up. They're only maybe eight inches round. They're not in our trench line, they were on the opposite side of the road. But I had the contractors go up, we opened it back up, and we repaired those couple of sections. There was five of them, I believe.
Steve, there's a-
I believe it was over the old steam lines.
Sorry, there's a pretty big size patch, right, if you're on Myrtle, just before you get the press got, and it's sunken down already?
That is scheduled, that's just, what happened there was, we put the water main in, we got finished with the project. The homeowner on the corner was remodeling the home, disconnected everything in the house, applied for water after, two days after we paved it. He had no water inside the building. So that's why that got cut. It was more of an emergency situation, we had to cut it, and that is only temporary restoration in that cut right now. But it is saw cut to be done. We went two foot beyond the actual cut because of the brand-new pave.
Right.
And we're gonna go in there, and it should be done this week, because they have to do those two more sinkholes and that big cut that you're talking about up there. That should be restored this week.
Thank you.
Yep.
So once that's restored, is that the, that's the last of any kind of restoration or work that has to be done on Myrtle?
As far as, yes, Myrtle will be complete. I mean, it is overlaid now, there are just some issues that popped up after the overlay was done that we're just addressing now. And so, yes, it will be done, it should be done by the end of this week.
Okay.
But as far as, a lot of these cuts on this list that are coming out, these aren't, these aren't our mainline projects. These are water main breaks, issues with service leaks and stuff like that. These are all single cuts that was on this list that were sent to us here, and they are in the process of being restored right now. The contractor that does our restoration is in the city for the third time. He comes, loops around through all the municipalities. He's back into the city again, and he is gonna stay in the city until all of these are addressed. He should have the majority of these permanently done by the end of next week, if not by the end of the week after, he will be finished, depending on weather. There's only two cuts on this whole list that was sent to me that is not marked out, and they were only problems that we had in the last two weeks, so they're fresh cuts. That's why they're still temporary in them, and they're not on the list to be marked. But all the other cuts that were done are marked out in white, to be restored, they're already saw cut. It's just a matter of getting the contractor in there to do them, and he is in town now. So they should be done within the next two weeks.
And the list you're referring to has 1115 Fisk, 1035 Park, Monsey?
Yeah, the Greenridge, the Greenridge section, yes.
All right, thanks. The other big project is the one on Evelyn Ave, or Evelyn Place, right now?
Evelyn Court.
Yeah, you're talking Evelyn Court. Yeah, that's what hap, you probably know what happened. We had a, we had the line lined rather than replaced.
Could you please, I'm sorry, some people in the back can't hear. I'm sorry, just pull it up.
So we did receive an email, it looked like a pretty good depiction of what happened.
Yes, okay, so-
If you could just review that.
We're about a third, they're about a third of the way done as far as taking out the old liner and putting in the new liner. So they're up to, they started Drinker and they're up to Washington now. So it's gonna take a little while, though. Bypass pumping situation's gonna stay the same until it's complete. So unfortunately, it's-
We did get a lot of questions on that, so if you could just describe that process so they, like, people maybe at home or in the audience could understand what was occurring?
We need, they need a bypass pump because when they're putting the liner in, you have to stop the water from going down the line. So what you usually do is you grab it at the upstream manhole and divert it to the next manhole down, so that the area you're working on is not being flooded with sewage and water. So it's basically a temporary fix, but you have, I mean, it's a temporary diversion while you're working on that section of the pipe, so as you keep moving up, you gotta move the pump, because you can't work on a line that has flow on it.
Now, with that, is it just water, or is it water and sewage?
It's water and sewer, but it's contained within the sanitary system.
Okay. We did get a couple of questions. No leachate, right?
I'm sorry?
There's no leachate running through there?
No, no, no.
Thank you. That was another question.
Yeah, no, differently.
So we did get a couple of questions sent to us about this project in particular, if we could just go through some of them.
Sure.
So how and when did you know that the failure occurred in that pipe on Evelyn Court?
When we found out, gee, I don't know the exact date, it was in August. We started getting complaints, and people backed up on Evelyn Court. So I was actually the one who went down there and investigated with our camera crew, and we found that the liner had basically come off the line, off the main. So it was either, I don't, I'm not saying what the problem was, if it was with the lining company or the liner itself, I don't know, to be honest with you. But whatever happened, it was the liner flipped in, it came off, and it blocked up all those houses in Evelyn Court up near the school, the DEF. That's when we noticed it. And then we researched it more with our cameras. We sent a camera down the line, and we continuously reported it to the supervisor in charge and the lining company so they can address it.
Okay. When it came to, I think around that time Hurricane Debbie came through, and there was larger storms-
Yeah, a lot of rain, yes.
Did you know it was failing prior to that or after that, or was it due to the storms that caused you to find out?
I'd be lying if I said, I really don't know. That's a heavy flow line to begin with, and doesn't have to be a heavy storm, but just enough rain. That's, that pipe is about a third of the way full on a dry day, so I mean, there's a lot of flow on it.
See, James, you said that the project is a third of the way completed.
As far as taking out the old liner and putting the new liner back, a new-
Do you have an estimated time of completion?
I don't. I'd have to get back to you, because it may vary. Every segment's a little different, so I wouldn't have a hard number for you, unfortunately. I can get a better estimate and forward it on to-
If you could, because we have a lot of residents that live in-
Yeah, I understand. No, it's, I understand completely.
So with regards to the liner, so I guess it's identified that the liner was the failure.
Yes.
And if so, was the failure because of manufacturing or installation? And was manufacturing, are they gonna cover the cost for the manufacturer? Or was installation, are you gonna absorb the cost instead of passing on to the consumers?
My understanding is it's the contractor and the suppliers that are taking care of-
The cost?
The cost. We're not taking, we're not, we're not involved in any costs as far as getting it back to where it should be.
Thank you.
Do you happen to have any kind of monitoring system on pipes like this to know that something's coming up? I know a lot of the residents in the area were, they didn't really know what was going on at first, or they weren't told what was going on, so there was a lot of confusion or assumptions that may have been made because they weren't informed. But is there any kind of monitoring system on this so residents can be informed so they don't have to wonder what's occurring?
As far as monitoring of the situation and giving updates, is that what you mean?
Yeah, and as well as communication.
I'd have to work with our external affairs person. We could, we could get with that, because we don't, we don't typically on the field, you know, we do talk with customers on a routine basis, but I can talk with her as far as getting some kind of, whatever she does, to get the information out to that location, to that area, you know. I could bring it up to our external-
Or even some kind of alert on your website that indicates, say, listen, there's a major break at such and Evelyn and North Washington.
Sure.
Here's what occurred, here's what we expect, you know.
I understand, yeah.
You do that on your water side, I know, because I got alerts today. The 11 to Stafford again was broke, so maybe on your sewer side, that, the stormwater side, you could do an alert like that. That works well, because then you know it's going to be down.
I have a quick question about Drinker Place. So will you be using an above-ground piping system on Drinker Place as you proceed down to Capous Ave? Is that occurring, or will?
Yeah, yeah, the bypass pumping is you're taking it from the upstream manhole, grabbing it there with pumps, and externally putting it into the next usable manhole that you're not working in. Yeah, so you're actually just diverting the mainline with a pipe outside to the next manhole.
So as you work your way that, towards Drinker Place, you're gonna continue that above-ground bypass as you work your way down?
Yes, yes. Yeah, some places are better than others for bypass pumping, and they may utilize those a little longer than normal, you know.
And is that, is that gonna go all the way down to Capous? How far are you gonna go with that?
As far as I know, they're replacing it all the way up to the school to the DEF, because that's how far the lining went. So they're replacing all of it.
Do you have a completion date on that, or is that, that's tentative right now?
No, I have to get back, I'll get back to you on that. I can assume it's gonna be at least a month or so, but to give you definite, I'd be lying. I don't wanna give you false information without researching.
Yeah, I know, looking at, I mean, your email said it was gonna take three weeks to remove and clean the surface for installation, plus another three weeks, so it was about six weeks.
Okay.
How far are we, right now, we're in about?
I don't know when that letter was dated, so, but we're about a third of the way as of right now, so, and they started a few weeks, a couple of weeks ago, so. I would say month, I mean, I'm just, I didn't see that letter, so I don't know.
So tentatively about a month from now?
About a month, yeah. But I can confirm that for you and get back to Frank for you, if that's okay.
Okay.
Very well. Okay, gentlemen, thank you for coming. Mr. Osolinski, you will inform Mr. Voldenberg when you complete your list, and then we can bring you back if there's any further questions. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, I'll give the list to Frank, and he can set up a date, and I'll gladly come in and we'll do this again with, like I've done in the past.
Very good, thank you.
So, sorry, one last question. When it comes to North Main Avenue, so North Main Avenue right now, you guys would be ready to complete if it wasn't for those other projects that are occurring? Is it the city that's the major holdup there, or is it PennDOT with the bridge or the gas company?
So UGI came in right after us. The storm is still being designed, so I don't think that even the city's ready to install the stormlines at this point. You know, if there was areas that, you know, decided from the study that I think you guys are doing don't need to be replaced anymore, and we could pave sections, you know, if we do that sooner than later, we could get our paving contractor in to do sections. But like I said, you know, a lot of this goes back to coordination with UGI. They estimate that they won't be done doing gas services until the end of the year. So if, you know, we're letting them do all their gas services first before we do restoration, so we're not double paving on two different utilities, you know, they're not done until the end of the year. A lot of the paving contractors, you know, aren't making a lot of the blacktop in the winter months, so you're looking at spring for restoration. And, you know, we'd be looking to get in early spring unless the city tells us that, you know, the storm contract and contractor can't do it until, you know, summer, August, whatever, you know, we're ready to follow up the city's-
Yeah.